Good afternoon, everyone. It's three, it's three forty today is the third of August 2021. The Lubbock City Council is in especially call meeting this afternoon to continue our budget workshops. This is day two of budget workshops. Thank you all for being with us today. We will start in, pardon me, we'll start where we let off, left off last night. We were looking at the internal, internal service funds, is that what we call them? Yeah. And I think we're, I think we're gonna start with the GIS and data services, which I believe is on page eight of our second presentation from, from Mr. Kostlich. And I think with no, no further ado, I'll turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Welcome back. Excited for day two. Like to make just a couple of quick announcements before we jump back on to the departmental presentations. We had previously indicated to you that the appraisal district would be returning to us the final voter approval rate, which is that last little bit of movement to calculate the tax rate. We were to have that back tomorrow. There's been a delay on the state side of that. So we're now expecting it on Thursday. What that means is if we need to adjust slightly on those tax rates, and it'll be in the tens or hundreds of the pennies. But if we do have to adjust, we will make those calculations when we get it and present them back to you in work session next Tuesday on August the 10th. So we're gonna be a bit late on that. We had a question yesterday about what was the pay down, total pay down of debt the year prior. The answer to that is $127 million. So it was quite significant. Now, it's combined between your general obligation debt and your enterprise or revenue debts. So we have that out there. Council request was also made to have the street maintenance presentation that's been emailed to each of you. Also, a good time to note that we will have all three days of these council presentations plus the street maintenance presentation on our website. So anybody that is interested can get all these presentations as well as call up the recorded video or such. Final item, just really, I kind of think tells the story. We've mentioned all along, you know, one of our drivers is, you know, costs of things like natural gas going up. So we received today the gas adjustment. We get these monthly or bimonthly from Atmos. And the cost of gas for Atmos for August 2021 is $5.45 per MCF, standard rate. When we sat in this room last year on August 1st, the cost per MCF of natural gas was $2.47. So it's, it's just a little more than doubled. It's about 120% increase. With that, if y'all are ready, we'll jump in and start going back through the departments.
That'd be great. Counsel, anything for you before we get started? Let's begin.
Okay, we'll pick up with GIS and data services. You see in this account or this department projecting an overall increase, just under $79,000. Some of that are the compensation adjustments that we've discussed and proposed. This department is feeling the heat from the increased liability insurance cost. We do have one item in the departmental capital, and that is a one-time replacement of a large format color plotter. This is the device that we produce the various maps that you see around the building and for different workshops and so forth.
Any counsel, any questions, comments on GIS and data services? All right, let's continue.
Next department is the radio shop. Increase of 98,513. Let me go ahead and draw your attention to the bottom line in the expenditures. That is capital outlay. You'll see that line's $105,000. We are adding some security at our radio shop building, but the bulk of that is replacing a generator and a transfer switch that we need to. If you take that out, this, this budget would be actually down just slightly for that. Okay, if no questions, we'll go to print shop. We have a decrease in the print shop annual budget of just a little over $9,000. Adjustment on some staffing, maintenance and operations will go down due to a one-time replacement of a piece of equipment last year, and the same with the capital outlay going down. So for this one, a little bit less than, than even. It's down.
Okay, council, any questions on the print shop? Let's continue.
We'll go next to the central warehouse. Overall increase, $23,000. A small piece of that is upgrading our existing warehouse security system. We do have an increase coming in, the cost of the vehicles, the equipment, maintenance, and an increase in property insurance, and then some very small adjustment. And this is just how the personnel layout due to the compensation increase. Recall, this is one of those internal service funds that has its own reserve account. This is one of those eight percent accounts. You also have a capital item that we looked at yesterday, which is looking at what, what's the future of that facility. So.
Okay, council, any questions on warehouse? All right, let's continue.
Go to risk management. Overall increase, $2.2 million. This is entirely in the premiums and the scheduled charges. So this is the increase that we've talked about in several of the departments. We have had increases in our property, our liability, and our workers' compensation. And it's not pleasant to look at council, but if you will go to the line is premiums and scheduled charges, start back in fiscal year 19. You see how that went from 4.1 to 6.9 to 8.8, now at 11.11. So this is tough. When you do a annual effort to try to bring these down, we're not unique in facing this, although I do think we're probably getting a bigger increase maybe than others. So this was rough.
Counsel, any questions on, on Ms. Joy?
I do have questions, and it has to do with insurance, both health insurance and property, and how we handle those. And after yesterday, looking at those scheduled charges, and I understand that's not all just insurance, but I would say majority of it is insurance. I thought about it last night. It troubled me because I'm not sure that everyone understands how very expensive it is. Let's start with health insurance. Now, that's paid from the general fund. Is that correct?
Each fund pays their piece, but it's based on headcount.
Right. In other words, each department would have a line item for what the, their health insurance for their, and dental would be for their employees, correct?
Yes.
And enterprise fund would be treated the same way?
Yes.
But the total cost, and this is what got me concerned last night, the total cost for the health insurance and dental, setting aside what employees may pay back. What is that total cost?
Flip back to.
Thirty-five million.
Yeah.
Hey.
And that's both sides. That's both the city pay and the employee pay.
Right.
Right. That's $35 million, and it's gone up every year, continues to go up. And so.
Thirty-eight million. I just missed it by three.
Oh, missed by three. Okay.
Feel like at WC Fields, million here, million there, pretty soon it's real money.
Yeah. And, and it is real money. And it kind of goes back to, to the health and wellness plan. There's responsibility on everyone's part to try to do, to do better. But I think that citizens need to understand that you have to have health insurance benefits for your employees. We talked about it with solid waste yesterday. Where'd Ms. Haney go? There she is. We talked about that, that even though the, the drivers may not be paid what some of us feel like they should be paid, there are other benefits that they have that help to make up for some of that difference. But that's $38 million. And when you start looking at it in terms of what our total revenue is from, from all sources, that's a pretty high percentage. So the other one that bothered me is property, insurance and liability. And, and a lot of that increase is based upon claims. I understand that. But what's the total for property and liability insurance for our buildings, for our vehicles?
About 11.1.
11.1 million. And so that limits the city on, on a lot of what it can do. And then when you throw in that our, our primary job is to be, make sure we have public safety and our fire, and you put all that in together. So I just wanted people to really think about it and understand that we're doing the best we can, but we have absolutely no control over those costs, other than we can be healthier, and we can try to do a better job of protecting our property, not getting into accidents, things of that nature. And that is a responsibility on the part of employees. So I just, it bothered me last night, the numbers are just too big.
Well said.
Blue, does, I know at department level, particularly at our self, self, because our self-insured nature and all, loss experience goes to the, you know, follows the department on, at a health, on, on health insurance. How, how did we, how do we do that? Does it follow the employee? Or do we just, is it on a per, per head basis?
It's on that. It's on a per head basis. So no, it doesn't follow the, the exact employee. So whatever employee that is in the department, if they have a health issue, it's just spread across.
Make, I mean, I guess that makes sense. There's a bunch of our departments that would, you have, you have enough mass that you could do that. But like, they got the print shop with two people. It's hard, it's hard to be very difficult.
That'd be very difficult.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Christian?
Just a quick note on what Ms. Joy said too, in regards to the cost and harkening back to Mr. Beck's presentation about the health and wellness program. It just emphasizes how important that program is. And I know when I first came on the council, I was very disappointed in the participation level of the, of that program for our employees. So I should have done this yesterday, but it's a double thumbs up. And if there's anything that I can do to help perpetuate the enrollment and the participation in those health and wellness programs, I'll be right by your side. It's, that's so critical, I think. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Now, let's continue, Mr. Atkins.
Okay. Next department, we'll start looking at internal services capital improvement program. Some of these have been mentioned prior, but I'm going to walk through the ones that are proposed for funding in this budget. First line is public safety CAD, computer aided dispatch, mobile, and RMS record management system software, $4 million. That is proposed for a CO funding, sorry, tax note funding, tax note funding, and will hit late next year. Coming down, next large line item is 2.902 million, nearly 2.903, general fund vehicle replacements, the part that is being done by cash. The next one right underneath it is the tax note and the amount of 1.1 million. That is that one compactor to be used at the landfill. The next general fund ARPA or ARPA, 5.928, that is the three fire trucks and the 52 police vehicles. We have a very small expense at the cemetery. Cemetery is a separate fund, $8,000, of course, cash. The replacement vehicles inside water and wastewater, that enterprise fund, 739,000. Stormwater, 111, and IT at 30,000.
So Blue, let's talk about the CAD and RMS software, the mobile, the mobile software. Does this imply that we've made a decision to buy this and host it ourselves?
Or it does not at this time. No. We're still working with the consultant that we've hired on to do this. So they're still going through the evaluation. You know, we have to draw the line and ascend and make a plan for this budget. So we've set aside this 4 million. That's, that's what we think that the project would cost on a maximum basis. So that's what we're gonna put in. The actual details behind it will come to you later, once there's an actual decision made.
It could be, it could be a hosted SaaS solution.
Could be a hosted, it could be a SaaS. It could be many, many different avenues. We're still exploring at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Let's keep going.
Okay, we're now into enterprise funds. First one up is water wastewater. Recall that we are requesting a 50, 50 cent, a 50 cent increase on the base rate, and then pro-rated as you move into the different sizes. So it starts at the three-quarter meter. So you are seeing revenue going up on the water sales, both because of the number of customers and the requested rate increase. Same on wastewater, although the requested increase there is one nickel. It is five cents on the base rate. You will see interest earnings declining slightly. This is due to us cash funding and spending down that cash. We are using some portion of our excess reserves for cash funding of capital in these items. Questions on the revenue summary, and we'll flip over and do expense.
Ms. Joy?
On the water side, I noticed that you are projecting out in future years to continue that increase on the base rate. That troubles me. So let's talk about why. I think Ms. Patterson Harris and I have both had issues, even with a 50 cent increase on the base rate. And so I would, I'd like to understand why that model continues to show every year. I think in some years, it goes up by as much as a dollar. So.
Just a second, I'm gonna get my model out and walk through it. So first, and counsel, I know you're aware, but just reminder, the only item that's under consideration will be the current proposal, which is the 50 cents. Right, but want to be sure.
Everybody else.
Everybody hears that.
Well, I, you refer back to the model.
Right.
And you have to have projections going forward. I think we all understand that. But for this year, we're talking about 50 cents. But going forward in that model, we're talking about more than 50 cents increase in the base rate.
Right. And that is done because we do fill in a current year plus five, so five more years on the projected capital. Those are not capital projects that necessarily, we know for a fact, will happen in year two versus year four. We don't know. The situations may change. But when we build the five-year capital models, we try to. we try to match the financial model to fund that. Um, this has actually looked this way most years, it did not last year. Um, we held it down so hard, um, most years, and you'll see this in most of our models that have a rate associated with them. What actually comes forward, uh, I would truly be surprised if we came back in a year and asked for a dollar on the base rate. I don't know that that's been done in many years when we first also made the adjustment to put the gallons in the base rate for our truest low, lowest consuming customers.
And by that, you're referring to the first one thousand gallons?
Correct.
There, it's no charge, uh, for that first one, one thousand. Are we, well, you've, you've said that there's growth in, in water in the sense of more people, uh, more housing, so the revenues are up. And I guess, I want to be sure that we're not just building a treasure chest. And if we are, what are we building it for?
Okay, re- revenues definitely are up, um, even without the rate increase, they're up because of the increase in demand, number of connections that we have on the system. Anytime the amount of water we're selling goes up, our outputs, our input costs are going up as well. So, anything to do with pumping with electricity, with supply, with chemicals, with personnel around the plants, that goes up as well. So, it's not that each new gallon we sell becomes, but we call it true profit because it also has an associated expense with it. So, you are going to see that go forward. And the second part of the question was, are we building a treasure chest?
Well, we all know that there's a, a probability that the, um, Canadian River Water, uh, Project will have to be, will have, add a new line. And that's going to be expensive. And so, is that one of the items that we are, uh, working toward? Is that a reason for excess reserves?
So, the project is Crimwell Two, um, we don't have a locked price on that, nor do we have the lock to date. We think it's late in this current decade. Estimates for the City of Lubbock portion start on the low side at about eighty million dollars and go up from there. Counsel, we started two years ago, putting a small amount of money in a capital project to save cash towards that. We continue to do so and then we're going to start escalating it as well. So, some of what we see in excess revert, reserves will go there. We don't know the exact timing nor the cost if we move forward with Lake Seven. It will not be inexpensive at all. Uh, want to be clear for those that are listening, we've not pulled the trigger on that, we're still in the permitting phase and likely to be in the permitting phase for several more years. But yes, all, all of those go together. I think it's still important to have a healthy reserve over your policy requirements. One major something that goes down or that goes out. This is a system that's worth over a billion dollars. It doesn't take much to spend tens of millions if something goes wrong.
Well, it, it's apparent that thus far, City of Lubbock past councils and mayors have done a good job on the water issue. And I do think it's important for people to know that Crimwell is another source of our water and it may cost us some money, uh, down the road. And that Lake Seven, if permitted and if it comes to fruition, is another source of water for the City of Lubbock.
Yes, and if I might, you know, just add a little bit to that, um, this council, prior councils going back a long time have made phenomenal investments, both in supply, what water can we go and get? And the ability that we have to move water around and to deliver it. Under this council's guidance, we are in the midst of the project that allows us to take that second ten million gallons a day out of Lake Allen Henry. Doing that, plus the future options of the Crimwell Two Pipeline and the Lake Seven allow us to continue to reduce the amount of water we take out of your Bailey County Well Field, that's your groundwater supply for Lubbock. It really, in, in our mind, is your, that's your safety valve, that's your reserve. If we don't pump the groundwater, it stays there. We can go get it when we need it. If we do pump it, we all know that the Ogallala Aquifer does not replenish in any significant manner. So, we're doing what we can to minimize the draw on that. Taken together, you've got a completely valid one-hundred-year water plan for your community.
Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Bear. The Crimwell Two line that is going to be needed, that's the reason I feel like that this, for lack of a better term, savings account model by utilizing even a fifty percent, fifty cent increase in base rate. If we do that, it's very much like the conversation that we had yesterday about fleet. And I think that, uh, if we're disciplined enough to do this, the future of the city is less at risk. Uh, not to bring up obviously what's happening in the West Coast and other parts of the country and water issues across the US. But, I think that it's worth that savings account model to reinvest every year, even with small increases like this, to make sure that when we get later in this decade, that we do have a good funding mechanism for Crimwell Two. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Uh, just quickly, I just wanted to, uh, to second what Mr. Griffith is saying. And, uh, even though Mr. Atkinson said we have a hundred-year waters plan, I don't want people to think that we need to back off any sort of conservation uh, initiatives, and I think that we have not pressed forward on even more so that the next generation, that's another, when we get to that hundred-year mark, we'll be able to say we have another hundred years of, of water, uh, for the citizens of, of Lubbock, Texas, because as we all know, um, water is so precious here. And the other thing, Mr. Mayor, I think that we don't take into consideration is a lot of times just, uh, is, uh, our citizens is how much, how important our water and that hundred-year water is to our economic development, um, uh, plans and initiatives are too. That's, water is something that somebody that they're considering moving to Lubbock is a very bright shining star for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think it's not only people thinking about moving here, it's the people that are already here that are continuing, maybe most importantly, they're continuing to invest. So, I, I agree with Mr. Christian and Mr. Mr. Griffith's comments, and I don't, I don't think Ms. Joy was disagreeing with that, but, um, I, I'm curious what it would cost in the rate model if we didn't use ARPA dollars and we just use the rate for, to, for that, uh, that, uh, proposed overhead storage. Because I think in some ways it's, those costs should be associated, ratepayers should pay for that.
But, so, I'll start kind of where the proposal is and then talk about some impacts. So, with the fifty cent requested increase and the spin down that we have on other pieces of the model, um, for cash funded capital, we would end the year with twenty-seven point seven million in the water wastewater fund and the excess reserve. So, as this budget is written, the papers we have in front of us.
It's a twenty-seven, seven fifty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Should, should match to what we looked at yesterday. If we took, let's say, half of the water towers, eight point three five million. So, if we took half of that and funded that with cash, we took the other half out of ARPA. You're going to pull down, uh, the spend on ARPA by four point one seven five, you're going to increase the spend out of reserve by the same amount. And you'll end up at twenty-three point five million in the reserve. This is still without changing the proposed rate increase. I've, I've got those numbers separate. If you funded a hundred percent of that water tower out of your existing cash, still with the same requested rate increase, you pull the reserve down to nineteen point four. Now, when you look at the total fund model, counsel, and we've seen those before where we look at revenue expense, or we upside down, right side up, you'll have two years of going negative in, in your model. It, it's not going to, it's not going to kill you because you still have this, whether you select the twenty-seven, the twenty-three, or the nineteen, you still have that extra cash. Just know that that model will show negative for two years, current revenue, current expense, and then it will flip back up and go positive again. And then I, I can do it with different levels of rate increase if you would like, but.
But you'd still, you wouldn't get below policy level reserves, would you?
No, no, you, you would never, you.
Okay.
If you do the fifty.
We're, we're sitting on a, I mean, today we're sitting on, we estimate thirty-five million dollars in, in excess reserves.
Right. In, in no case, uh, if you funded the whole thing out of cash, you would still have nineteen point four in those excess reserves.
I think that's my, that's where my thought process is, is that, is there potentially a, and I don't know if I can answer that yet, but it potentially, is there a better place to, to use those, those dollars? Particularly if we can do it without, without, you know, impacting that fifty cent.
So, let me talk about both sides of that. You raise a good point. We've modeled it, and of course, we, we do this at all levels, but we've modeled it at a seventy-five percent, seventy-five cent requested rate increase in a dollar. They don't move the bottom line enough that I would suggest we consider either of those. I, I'll give you the number just for an example, but if you went to a dollar increase, instead of leaving those excess reserves at nineteen point four, they would land at twenty point zero. I, I don't think it's worth it to get another fifty cents from the public for six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I, I don't recommend that at all. Seventy-five cents splits the difference, so it's even less, wouldn't worry about that. Mayor, you, you talk about, we don't know in terms of time on ARPA, and we talked yesterday, Mayor Pro Tim had us remind everybody the timing limits on ARPA, and they're generous, they're in our favor. There's still another water tower to come. Okay, there's still another one to come. We looked at trying to pull them all three into this year. Our engineers, our outside engineers did not recommend that for lots of reasons. Cost inflation, price of steel, difficulty in getting things. So, we, we landed on two. If the council wished, you could go ahead and fund this second water tower for this year out of your cash, stay with your rate increase. We can reevaluate on the following year. We'll know more about where we are with ARPA. We'll know how much participation we may be able to get, how many partnerships we can get from others on ARPA. And could, can possibly just have this discussion the next time.
Put it on our, let's put it, let's keep it on our list to talk about.
Okay, we'll put that on the sheet for tomorrow.
Okay. Ms. Joy?
I, I, I know that the ratepayers are helping to pay for all these towers through the rate, but I don't ne- know necessarily that I agree that, that they get all the benefit. Every person who comes to the City of Lubbock from anywhere benefits from our water situation. So, I don't know that it needs to all fall on the ratepayers. The ARPA money, I'm good with that. I think it's clearly set out in the guidelines that we can use that for that purpose. You know, it kind of reminds me of the street maintenance issues. You know, our, our taxpayers pay to repair the streets, but everybody from anywhere in the state of Texas, the nation of the world, uses our streets. So, there's benefit to others, not just to the rightpayers.
Well, but, but yeah, you're right. However, you don't think you're paying rates when you stop and buy gas? When you're from Clovis and you buy gas in Lubbock, you're paying, you're paying the expenses of that gas station with the gas, you're, when you go to, when you rent a hotel, you're paying for your water, but in your, in your room rate. When you go to a restaurant, you're paying for their water, their electricity, when you pay for your food. So, it's implied, it's not, they're not a ratepayer, but they're helping shoulder their part of the burden. Um, you know, you could take that to the extreme, some of the, you know, I mean, a person that lives just outside the city limits, it's a hu- it's a har- it's a little harder argument about them driving on the streets. Um, but, uh, anyway, that's a, it's a, it's a valid point. Any other questions on water and wastewater before we move along? Okay, let's move to the next from Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, this next page is the water wastewater expense summary. It's the counterpoint, uh, to slide fifteen that we just finished. Um, you see your bullet points there, um, ticking out the major changes, proposed compensation adjustment, reclassification of the heavy equipment operators. Um, we are feeling the heat for inflation for our chemical, safety, fuel, um, all of that. Um, do wish to point out a pretty significant increase in debt service. So, that stuff is moving the direction it needs to. We also, last year, had a one-time transfer to Lubbock Power and Light and the amount of one point two million dollars that we do not have this year, that was part of the meter project. So, that's not coming through. And then what you see in other transfers, those are your transfers for cash capital.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, we, uh, we talked a bit about, uh, the models. So, here is the model, uh, it does not fit, uh, on a single page. Um, if I could though, I want you to look at the first blue bar, the horizontal bar of the row. That is your revenue line item. So, for the proposed year, it's a hundred and forty-four point three million. Coming down the page, total expenditure, it's the second row from the bottom. Total expenditures of one forty-six point six or two point two million dollar delta. That delta's caught back up in the transfers and it's paid out of the excess reserves. It's not truly unbalanced, it appears that way, it's not. You see for twenty-three, again, twenty-three is not an action item, but FY twenty-three, that delta's five point one at the bottom of the page, that will be trued up before we do the FY twenty-three budget. Depending on how we do choose to fund the water tower, that may change a bit, whether you'll leave it as is, half or, or full deal. So, the next page.
I just might add that, that that's driven by your pay-as-you-go capital.
Absolutely.
That's why, that's why we're doing that.
Yes.
So, we're putting it one pocket, saving it and moving it out and don't have, you know, but we're, we're not issuing debt to do that.
That is correct.
Okay.
And this, this fund is benefiting in the next five years very heavily from debt paydown. It's benefiting very heavily from that. So, page eighteen, um, the blue bar, total excess reserves, that's the discussion that we've had. You see how that swings, but stays very healthy. And again, your out years are planning years, they're not actuals, FY twenty-two will be. Base rate is a percent of debt service. This is a discussion we've had several times. It is important to have your base rate cover as much of your fixed cost as you reasonably can. Um, that helps in many, many ways. Um, right now, uh, with the fifty cent request will be at eighty-eight percent. So, the base rate that we collect each month covers eighty-eight percent of your debt service. You see it going up, it's partly going up because of those proposed future increases or imaginary increases. And it's partly going up because debt service is going down. If you look to the right, you see by the time we get out into twenty-five, twenty-six, et cetera, how that's moving. That's one indicator that tells me despite the rate increases that you see in those out years, they're not going to end up just like that.
Right, it's too much.
Too much, too much. The rows on the bottom show you how the rate increase works. So, we'll stay on the first column, the one that's, uh, molded. You see this point seven five, the three-quarter inch meter, uh, at eighteen dollars and fifty cents, and then moving down. The final set down there is wastewater.
All right, anything on this one?
Just a reminder, the debt for Lake Allen Henry, our water source. Where are we on the balance of that? I was looking at this to see if I could tell where it rolls off.
Starts big in twenty-four.
You have to go in here. You have to go in here.
Mayor, if we could turn on Mr. Kostelich's microphone, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, yes, ma'am. So we do start seeing some decrease, substantial decrease in fiscal year twenty four. Really the entirety of the Lake Island Henry Dam. We have about three point five million dollars left. That'll be paid off in fiscal year twenty eight. Three point five million on the dam.
Okay, so it, it doesn't show up on this model because it just goes through twenty seven.
It just goes through twenty seven on the model, but you will start seeing that debt service come down. And as we roll off, not only the, not only the dam, but all the, the other facilities that went with it, all the pipe work that went with it. Those are, those are a little bit later, more twenty nine, thirty, but they will start rolling off as well.
Well, I think Mr. Grifft had pointed out that at the twenty twenty seven in your excess reserves, you would have fifty one in excess of fifty one, fifty two million.
Right, and that, that absolutely correct. That is presuming though, that we did each and everything that's in this model as it is today, which it will not be.
Yeah.
All right, let's continue. I'm going to pass the gavel to the Mayor Pro Tim for a moment.
Mayor Pro Tim, we'll go to page nineteen. This is water capital. Start at the top, kind of winding out, finishing the deployment of our asset management system. Three hundred thousand dollars in cash. Would point out, everything on this page is in cash. Transmission line and easement maintenance, four hundred and fifty thousand. This is specifically referring to the transmission line coming in from Lake Island Henry. Ongoing project that allows us to repair, to locate, to upgrade existing water valves. Five one three is pumping system improvement phase two. This is also a bit of an ongoing project. It's a five hundred thousand dollar request. We're taking a slight bit of that out of what we call unallocated bonds. I think in years past, I may have called those the couch cushions. Where we go back and we recapture dollars out of closed projects and things like that. If you can go back three or four years in your mind, you would see those numbers, that column would be populated quite heavily. There's not much left in the couch cushions. So we're keeping them cleaned out. We put those dollars back to work. Next page, though, it's two pages and I'll stop taking questions. Nine two six one seven, Roberts County Wellfield, new transmission line, that is the Cremo Two project that was discussed previously. Five hundred thousand dollars in it. I think that is escalating to a million or a million five in the model next year. It's escalating to four and a half million next year. So that is saving towards that project that we envision late this decade. Come down to new meter sets and meter replacements, one point eight million dollars. Two things going on there, a lot of growth, a lot of growth. The meters now, because of the AMI components that are in them, the meter reading components are much more expensive than they were in the past. Still in cash. Large water line assessment and repair, two hundred and seventy five. Our regular water line replacement program for fiscal year twenty one, five hundred and fifty thousand. Two hundred and fifty thousand to allow us to get in and do any water line work we need to on a street where we're going to come behind it and do maintenance or paving. We do have water ahead of Broadway Avenue that is associated with the proposed project that is in your future needs recommendation for a bond. This is the engineering. This is not tearing the street up. This is getting ready for it. You will see a similar project in wastewater. So it's to have us ready should that go forward. Water lines ahead of arterial roadways, one point three five, that is being funded with unallocated bonds, those couch cushions. Elevated storage tank, we've had a good discussion on it. One of those would be funded between new cash and unallocated bonds. As the budget's written today, the other is ARPA, and we'll have that in discussion and take your counsel on it. Collectively, it's twenty three point six million dollar ongoing investment in your water system.
Remind me what top line rev, annual revenues in the water system are, Blue. I could go back for it, but.
That's combined, that's water and wastewater.
It's pretty good, seventeen, so you're about, for every dollar in revenue you're putting, for every seven dollars revenue, you're putting about a dollar back in. It's not bad.
We've tried to.
Depreciation kind of, yeah, it's good, okay.
If you'd like, we'll go ahead and move to wastewater capital. Nine two four four eight is the ongoing water reclamation plant replacements. And you might imagine that's a pretty hostile environment for everything out there. We're continually investing at its two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The majority is new money, cash money, and a slight amount taken out of unallocated bonds. Sewer lines ahead of street paving, that's the sister project to the water lines. Nine two five nine one is lift station rehabilitation, three hundred thousand. Turning the page.
Page twenty two.
Page twenty two.
If you're keeping score at home.
S E W R P is Southeast Water Reclamation Plant, effluent pump station number two. I mentioned this very briefly when we did the executive overview. This is that large facility that allows us to control where we pump the treated effluent to. Very old facility, it runs all fixed speed pumps and motors on it. It's time to revise that and also to adjust it to what we're able to do today with the stream quality water. Change how this one works. We are proposing that one to be in bonds. Moving down, we have South Lubbock Sanitary Sewer Expansion Phase Four, two point two million. That would also be bond funding through wastewater. Sewer line conditions, assessment, repair, three million dollars. We have the East Lubbock future expansion, that's our ability to try to push some stuff out a little farther to the east. We did have that in a prior year, we're bringing it back forward, five hundred thousand. Split three hundred with new cash, two hundred with cash on hand. The next line is your sewer ahead of Broadway, so same as the water discussion, this on sewer. Five hundred thousand for just the upkeep on manholes on our big interceptor lines. So these are the very, very large ones. Sewer line replacements, sewer tap replacement, both at eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand each, and all those in cash. So that is your wastewater capital. Any questions?
Ms. Joy.
Did I understand you to say that the Southeast Water Reclamation improvements would allow for that water to be stream quality? No.
Let me rephrase that.
Stream quality, and I know the Northwest Treatment Plant does.
You're correct. Northwest is, the entire output of the plant is stream quality.
Right.
And that water is discharged daylight, whatever word you wish to use, into the top of the canyon lakes and makes its way all the way through. Very, very good water. This pump station number two, when it was originally built, when those pumps and motors and the piping and all that was put in it, there was no stream quality water being produced at the Southeast plant. We now can produce stream quality water. And that is not necessarily water that we need to be able to push onto either of the two land application sites. So how that plant, how that pump station works is different today. It's also very, very old. So this project will upgrade those pumps with what they call variable frequency drives, basically pumps that are variable speed. We don't have to turn giant ones on and run them when they're not needed. We run a pump based on the need. And we're still going to be able to go to the same places with it. It's how we're getting it there and the efficiency with which we do it. Does not make more or less stream quality water.
Let's look at the fee changes on the next page, please.
So these are your various, the first line is the tap fees, the water tap fees. We started back in eighteen, really looking at it hard in nineteen, started making some decisions in twenty, we tried to start upping these tap fees to try to get them to where the particular property that's benefiting from it is paying at least most of the cost of doing it. So a tap fee is completely unique to who wants the tap. It does not benefit to the left or to the right. Those costs are escalating quite a bit. You see, we were at six hundred and fifty three dollars for the last two years. We'd like to up that to one thousand and seven dollars. These are based on actual cost. We have the worksheets that can back that up. Three quarter and one inch would be the same, inch and a half, a little higher than that, and two inch. Or some one and a half inch in residential, two inch, you're getting up into commercial, we do that. The next is the actual requested increase on the base rate only. So the first line's three quarter inch meter, that's the fifty cents. As you move into the larger meters, that increase is just prorated. So it's the same percent change. The next set are your set fees, water meter set fees. This is where we come in and the box is put in place, connections are made, and the meter's able to go in it. Pro rata is the next. That's the value of those lines that others are installing, and they're going to get paid back a portion when somebody in between the two ends connects to it. Just our cost has gone up, people putting the lines in, cost has gone up, so their reimbursement needs to go up. That's what you're seeing there. That carries through in all aspects of a water line. So you've got pipe, you've got valve boxes, tapping sleeves, all associated with the same thing. You would go to page twenty five. We'll jump down and start on the sewer tap connections. Same logic that's in the water taps. Now we're looking at sewer taps. Big difference here is the depth. Depth matters on a sewer line, not so much on a water line. Page twenty six is where you have the requested increase.
Before you leave page twenty five, so if I need to put a sewer tap ten feet underground, it's a hundred and seventy five dollars less this year than, or proposed that was this year. All right, we don't get to see many of those very often.
You don't, and it's not because of the material, it's the other side of it. Okay, the next, we're on page twenty six, general consumer metered fee. This is your sewer service change in blue. I just noticed this says six cents instead of five cents. Please take one penny off of that, counsel, as you consider it. It's five cents, not the six that's on the page. Five cent, it's correct on the three quarter blue, it's not correct on the no meter fee. Underneath that are your wastewater prorata fees. So same logic is on water, but this in wastewater. That is going to carry you over all the way through to the end of page twenty eight. You'll see the expensive part, look on page twenty eight and look at the cost of the manholes. We've got one that went down, but we've added a larger manhole that went up. Some of these manholes are five feet in diameter, large. Mayor, council, any questions? Water, wastewater.
Okay, anything, anything on water wastewater before we go? Okay, let's move to Lubbock Power and Light, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, thank you. We have three representatives here today. Mr. Joe Jimenez, I believe, will do the presentation. Mr. McCullough and Ms. Manick are also here.
Oh, and Mr. Rose is lurking over there on the.
Oh, is Mr. Rose here?
I didn't see. He's in the corner there lurking. Yes, so don't, don't leave him out. Yeah. He may, he may be sitting on the floor. I'm not sure.
Mr. Rose, please don't sit behind Mr. Isom next time. I can't see.
Maybe by design.
Maybe by design.
Okay, Joe, welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to highlight some of the major changes for our fiscal year twenty two proposed operating budget. As you can see, our revenues have decreased to three hundred and seven thousand, I mean, three hundred and seven million, which is about a ten point one million dollar decrease from last year. The major driver of this is the twenty four million dollars that we booked as a revenue for our whole harmless payment last year for SPS. Of course, you know, that was paid out in June first of this year, so that is, that is done. The next is an increase of nineteen point seven billion in our T-Cott transmission cost of service revenues. As you know, this year we joined ERCOT in June, so we have four months of revenues on that, and next year we'll have the full twelve months of revenues on our transmission cost of service. That is again, the revenue generated from our rate of return on our debt service. Also with that, with that transition to ERCOT, you'll see our ERCOT whole harmless payment has increased by seven point three three million as well. The same thing with that, we only paid four months of whole harmless this year, and next year it would be a twelve months of whole harmless payment. My total whole harmless payment to ERCOT is a hundred and ten million dollars, and that should be paid off by fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven. Our purchase cost recovery factor has increased by one point three million, and as Ms. Atkinson has mentioned through this presentation, the main driver of our increase is the price of natural gas. You know, our energy is a direct correlation with the price of natural gas. And he gave you some amounts earlier, but you know, we were, we're very fortunate over the past few years to have really low rates due to low energy pricing, you know. In the summer of two thousand and nineteen, we were paying about seventy five cents a MMBTU. Last year it went up to about a dollar twenty five MMBTU, and this summer we're seeing prices nearly four dollars a MMBTU. So you can see the direct correlation between energy and, and natural gas prices, you know. So natural gas is what creates the energy, so that, that's the reason for the increase in the PCRF. Again, the other one is our excess reserves. You'll see that we're using three point seven million of our excess reserve to cash fund capital projects. Onto the expense side, you see we try to keep our revenues and expenses the same, so you can see that our revenues have also decreased to three hundred and seven million, which is a nine point, nine point two million dollar decrease for next year. Again, the whole harmless payment is the main driver of that, the twenty four million, as I mentioned previously. The major, one of the major increases for us this year is a two point four million dollar increase in compensation and benefits. That is due to net of ten FTEs being requested for next fiscal year, along with the compensation adjustment. I mean, just to give you all, you know, the ten FTEs may sound a lot, but you remember that we, we have been proposing a new transmission crew, which is seven full-time employees for this transmission crew solely dedicated to maintaining our, our new transmission system. Last year we had a capital project where we purchased all the vehicles and equipment for that crew, and this year that new crew will be coming on October first, have approved by, by council. We have also increased our distribution cost centers by three FTEs, and, and two of them are related to street lights workers. You know, the workload for street lights has increased, so we're adjusting those accordingly. Also, there's three increase in customer service, the same thing, the workload and customer service has really increased. And so we're trying to really manage that, and so we have increased, we're requesting three new FTEs in our customer service department. One thing I wanted to did mention to you, you know, since fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we have reduced our field service department by eight FTEs, and we told you we're going to do that with the transition to AMI, you know, there's no longer that much meter readers needed out in the field. So we have decreased our FTEs by eight in the, in the meter reading department. Again, energy and fuel costs, you can see that those are, I mean, those are strictly, like I said, those are based on natural gas pricing. It's something we don't control, you know, our past, our purchase cost recovery factor is a pass-through to the customer. Whatever we pay, it's passed on to the customer. And I didn't mention it on the previous slide, but I wanted to make sure you're new on the, on the revenue side, you know, our base, our meter base rate stayed the same, and we don't anticipate increasing those rates in our model in the next five years. Our base rates have remained flat for this is the fourth year that our base rates have continued to remain flat. Of course, you know, our debt service is increasing substantially next year, and that's due to the Bank of America note program that we're going to convert to issue bonds, you know. All this money that we spent was utilized for the overhaul of our transmission, our transmission and substations to get us into ERCOT. So now that is pretty much completely done, they're up and running, and again, that, that's the reason for the new transmission crew to make sure that that, that is kept up and maintained. that that, that is kept up and maintained properly now that we're in the ERCOT, seventy percent of our load is in the ERCOT market. And, and I just wanted to kind of give you all, you can see our LPNL financial model, it's a five-year forecast that we have. And the, the thing I really wanted to harp on, if you can see in our, in our forecast, you know, given direction, you know, this decision hasn't been made, but you can see that, you know, the biggest volatility of LPNL is our power pass-through cost, you know. And so you can see in fiscal year, in June twenty twenty three, those costs start dwindling down. And, you know, that, that is, that is where we're heading, where we are just a retail provider. And so in the model, you know, we forecasted it that way, you know, things can ultimately change given the direction of city council. But, you know, we, we have to forecast what, what we think in the next five years. So, so that is the, that is the transition that we're going to on that. On the next page, you can see that, you know, access are, we're really utilizing our general reserve, our excess deficit. Again, you know, on, once we get out of the purchase power business, you know, right now our model said at four months of our PCRF, our, our pass-through recovery. And so once that starts dwindling down, you know, we'll start drawing down the reserves. And so tha- that's the way the model is built. Like I said, once again, you know, given council's direction, we can head another way. But for the forecasting model, that, that's how we have transitioned over the next five years. And that is all I have for that, unless y'all have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Questions, council? I know we see some of this at a, at a EUB board meetings and follow this relatively closely. Anything from council on this? Mr. McCullough, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
One more thing I wanted to add, I'm sorry. You know, I didn't mention, we did, we are requesting a new director of customer service in our budget for next year too. You know, we had an assistant director and a CFO position, and we have, we decided to split those positions as a CFO and a, and a director of customers.
Talk to us a little bit about your T cost item in your fund level. Revenue.
Yeah, so our T cost, you know, that is, you know, we, we get a rate, rate of return on our transmission assets, you know. And so right now, i- it's minimal right now, but we are doing the interim T cost filing in September to bring on about two hundred and forty million dollars of assets on the books. That is all the new transmission system we've gotten. So, you know, we, we turn that over to the PUC and they decide if that two hundred and forty million is, is accurate. And what we do is we get a rate of return of one point five percent of the debt service that we used to pay on that transmission cost of service. So then it's a, it's a revenue line item that's in everybody's bill in ERCOT, and it is, that revenue is generated back to us based on that percentage of, of four coincident peaks.
And right now you have that projected at?
Forty-three million. Forty-three million, and that should remain relative consistent, you know, once, once you set your, your rate with the PUC, you don't change it unless you have substantial changes in your assets.
So a lot of the transmission that's been built in order to bring us into ERCOT was financed under that bank note that you talked about earlier. And so, but we still have money coming back to us to help pay those expenses and debt.
Absolutely, yes. So everything, everything that we funded with transmission, that T cost will pay off the debt service for that transmission that we built out.
You talked about a payment to SPS, twenty-four thousand, a million dollars, excuse me.
Yes, and that, that was the twenty-four million whole harmless payment, you know, that, that was the, the price that SPS, we negotiated for us to move seventy percent of our load into ERCOT.
And tha- and that was as a result of a public utility commission meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for, for Mr. Jimenez? Okay, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Kostelich or Mr. Atkinson, anything to add on that? Okay, let's keep, let's move ahead.
Counsel will go to stormwater. Start on page thirty-five. See that we are keeping the rate flat. We do have excess reserves. We have a twenty percent policy reserve in this account, and we are able to cash fund capital in stormwater by doing so. This item, or the first page is the revenue piece. Twenty-four point one million in revenue in the current budget year, twenty-six point one in the next year. That is all growth. It's not any change to rates.
Ms. Joy.
The very best part of this is that the street maintenance debt that was included in stormwater will be paid off. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We will no longer have street maintenance being charged back to stormwater. And that's taken probably about what, six or seven years at least, maybe longer than that, eight?
Yeah, let's go ahead and flip to slide thirty-six, maybe if we could. That item that you referenced, ma'am, that is a million dollar savings to stormwater. You see there right in the middle of the page.
And we have no increases in stormwater fee.
We have no, we have no increase in stormwater fee.
Ms. Joy, since you're, since you're hot, since you're on a roll, that street maintenance was put there, why, why was it put there? Remind everyone, you, you were, you, you, you weren't quite here, but right before you got here, so we say you changed things, but, but why was it done like that?
The, what was explained to me was that these streets were part of our drainage system, therefore, as the water ran down the streets, that made it a stormwater expense. Obviously, we didn't agree with that, and so it was changed.
And in some ways, it was maybe also an excuse for not paying for street maintenance with cash, right?
I'm sure.
Because you were debt, you're debt financing it.
That's right. It was debt financing, and it was, we, the council at the time I came on did not think that was a good way to do street maintenance, and so that was stopped, and I'm extremely pleased. There are two things I'm very happy about, a lot of things I'm happy about, but a couple. One is the master lease, which y'all used to make fun of me about, by the way. You didn't know what it was either.
They make fun of you. We thought you were right.
And the stormwater that we were able to accomplish, and it wasn't easy. It was not easy, but thank goodness it's where it needs to be, and our citizens are, are paying for what they're actually getting, and that is stormwater, not street maintenance.
Mr. Griffith, you want to add to that?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I would love to add to this.
We're sort of the buns on either side of the, of the meeting, that Joe, Ms. Joy keeps bringing the meat, we're just sort of on the other sides of that, right?
Well, just like stormwater runoff, maybe you and I may hear the gutters. I bet the water does run down, but Luke Kostelich, Mr. CFO, please tell us how long it's going to be as far, and, and yes, we've got new projects coming up, but our debt on this fund has obviously been what a great concern of the council. How long before this is paid off? We owe still seventy-eight million? Is that right?
All right, still, still in principle, we, we still have a hundred and five million left in stormwater. That fully pays off in twenty thirty-seven, fiscal year thirty-seven, sorry.
If I might add to that.
Please.
There's a large piece of that that was the Texas Water Development Board award at zero percent interest, and I think that hit the books in twenty seventeen.
It was twenty years. Roughly thirty-five million at zero percent.
Yeah, so if you take that off, I think we take the thirty-five off, that gets closer to maybe the question you're asking, sir.
Okay, maybe I was too optimistic, but that is zero percent interest.
That one was, yes.
The thirty-five million, that's right. Mayor, thank you for bringing that up too. But I, you know, it's always been a, a problem, but as we've seen this past year, it's very important that we take care of it. Who knows, we, who knew we would have monsoon season in Lubbock? So it is important that, and, and a lot of this was federally mandated way back when. We are, it's important that we continue with stormwater projects, but I'm like Ms. Joy, I'm anxious to get this one behind us. Thank you for that, I bet.
Okay, let's, let's keep on rolling on stormwater, please.
Should be on page thirty-seven, the financial model. Piece at the bottom, of course, is your rate, there is no change to the rate. Something we're pretty proud of on this one. If you also go towards the bottom, I'm just above that last light blue line. We have the total fund balance, eleven point six million. Reserve requirement of five, four point eight, and total excess reserves of six point eight. So we are putting cash back into the CIP this year for stormwater, a five point eight million dollars. It's been a while since we've been able to do that.
Any questions? Okay, please continue.
Next page is the stormwater capital. It is our annual digital, digital orthophotography. So this is getting the fancy aerial pictures taken and the ability to use those to analyze and to plan on projects. Nine two five one eight, stormwater system improvements. This is, you know, your ongoing care and feeding of the system. Seven hundred thousand dollars, five eighty-four out of new cash, hundred and fifteen out of old cash. Stormwater rehabilitation and maintenance, exactly what it's titled, five hundred thousand. We're ready to step forward on the Upland and sixty-sixth Playa Drainage Improvement Project. I think certainly council member Christian's very well, very well aware of the need to get that one done. We've been working on it. This will keep that area kind of over by Upland, Santa Fe, kind of all in that area, and really help to clean it up. The final one, Playa Lake fifty-four lateral extension, five hundred thousand. Again, the entire capital proposal is five point eight. It is all cash and it is all stormwater cash.
Okay, questions on stormwater capital improvement program? Ms. Joy.
I guess the, looking back at the Northwest Lubbock and Maxi Park project, seventy-seven million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. Much needed. Is it finished? My constituents would like to know when the barricades and the cones and all that good stuff, because they're still working over there on a piece of it. Mr. Kingdom, are you hiding? You're too tall. You're way too tall.
I need to hide behind Mr. Isom again. So, so we have done substantial completion of that project and spent all the thirty-five million that y'all were talking about earlier. And so we're doing the final walkthroughs, the final completion stuff, so all those barricades and everything should be coming down related to that project in the very near future. So, I mean, we're like days, if not weeks away for having that completely cleaned up and patched up and done.
And that project, obviously, the Maxi Park part, part of it is huge, but over in, like in Higginbotham Park, where they have now, it's not quite finished, because I keep watching the, the flooding that would occur there when we had a rain, a substantial rain. So that's the last piece. Is that right? We won't be going down Quaker, digging any more trenches, doing anything like that?
Not down Quaker.
I knew that was coming. Where are we going to dig now?
Well, the, the lake fifty-four lateral that was on there, we, we kind of call that the Blue Sky Lake, Blue Sky at the Four Street there.
Right.
And if you guys saw the recent rains that we've had, that lake is full and the water has nowhere to go.
It's always in the street.
Right, and so that piece would be the design piece, and then connect it into that drainage system with a future year construction project potentially.
And so that goes north and west, right? Isn't that correct? Either it goes up north and then west, or depending off, we can work out with tech, it would go more on an angle.
Right.
Is that correct?
Kind of working theory right now is either we'll go up Indiana, or we'll snake through the neighborhood to tie into the line that's up at Erskine and Indiana vicinity.
But it's not in this budget.
The design is.
The design would be.
So there'll be more barricades.
So that's, that's loosely tied to the Northwest Drainage Project, but it's its own independent project.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that goes into District One and not into, yeah. Okay, let's go to Lake Allen Henry.
Jump over to page forty. Your revenue summary for Lake Allen Henry. This is the recreation part of the lake, not the water part. Kind of the line item I'd like to start with. Third one down says entrance fees. You see in FY twenty, that very large spike, we didn't double, but we got close. So we went from two twenty-one to four sixteen. We budgeted two seventy-five this year. We'll probably be a little over it, but we don't think we're going to be back up where we were in twenty. So we've come back down a little for your budget proposal for twenty-two, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So while that shows as a large reduction, it's really not, because you've got that artificial year in there, that, that four hundred and forty-one thousand dollar year. It is high demand. We just don't know where it's ultimately going to settle, and we'll flip to the expense page. I do want to show you one thing that we changed during that COVID year that we're continuing to do.
Can't imagine it, I, I would think two thirty is pretty conservative.
I, I think it is as well.
I mean, as we're growing, the lake's full, it's becoming more well-known, there's more people living around it. I mean, there's just all kinds of, I know they don't, the ones living around it don't pay entrance fees, but those that go in to visit very well could.
Right. So some of the highlights on the expense side, that first one, we are still providing though full public safety coverage. That's either the police boat or the fireboat, or on super busy weekends, both boats. And that's really where the biggest part of that compensation increase is coming from. We charge to this fund when we're doing that. Our maintenance costs are up. It's not different than others. It's not near as big a number, just because there's not that much equipment or vehicles down there. Our scheduled charges are up because of liability insurance and electric utilities. That is actually on one of the co-ops that's in ERCOT down there. It's where the electricity comes from. Our transfer over to the water department has come down a bit, and that's because we have debt payoff from what originally put all this in.
Talk about the, the dam at Allen Henry, if you would, and just how we maintain the dam. And, and there's been discussion about another dam that's in the county. It's not ours, but I think it would be timely to have just a real brief discussion about that.
We'd be glad to do that. First, I think it's probably helpful for everybody to recognize that we have a full-time dam tender that actually lives there, and that's, that's the job title for that individual. So that dam, number one, is under constant maintenance. Number two, it is under constant observation. It is an insured structure, which means it is also inspected by third-party experts on a pretty routine basis. So it is in good shape. It is kept in good shape. We have a required emergency response plan if, for some unimaginable reason, anything ever was to happen. We know how to mitigate and how to address that. I think the, probably the thing that's most telling is to how that system is designed and how well it works. Council's well aware that dam went over the spillway this year significantly over the spillway. In fact, for the longest time, it was booked at a hundred and three percent capacity, which meant the water was still above the spillway. All of that stayed exactly within that spillway as designed. It did not have to go to the emergency spillway. It didn't jump loose. It moved a lot of water and a lot of debris, a lot of trash that came down. It moved a lot of water and a lot of debris, a lot of trash that came down through that. But it worked and it worked well. So your dam's in good shape. It's got good people taking care of it, and there are eyes on it constantly. Just to close that, that is all funded through water.
Right.
It's not, not in the budget we just looked at. That's in the other one.
I thought this is a more appropriate time to talk about it, though.
Good, good question. And it's really tall if you drive across the top of it.
I was able to go down there with two members of the Allen Henry Navy, Mr. Chides and Mr. Griffith, and do a full tour, including driving across. And it's very much, it's very informative. I'm sure that their Navy uniforms are buried somewhere in these, in these expenses, but.
They're in, they're in the background of your cover sheet, Mayor, on your binders.
Okay, alright, good. Alright, anything on Al, anything else on Allen Henry? Let's go to the airport. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chides. Oh, Mr. Christian, I'm sorry, Randy.
Do we look a lot alike?
Mr. Christian.
You know, obviously, we all know the popularity of, of Lake Allen Henry and the folks that, that, that take advantage of it. Mr. Atkinson, do you, do we do an annual review to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of boat slips and some of the other amenities there to our reserves that talk about us needing to increase those numbers or just some general conversation about the future of Allen Henry in regards, regards to that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We, we watch that pretty closely. I'll talk about two deficiencies that are down there. We have a lot of input from our users. If you're up early on a Saturday or a Sunday morning, the parade of boats heading from Lubbock, it's fun to see. But it really has kind of overrun the capacity of two things. One is the boat ramp. Second is the slips that we have out there. We're discussing, we are looking, we don't have a good answer. I would note there are some that think we have a third deficiency, but there's not a concession down there. So there's not a a marina, whether it's literally out on a dock or it's up on the shore. We do have a pretty strong challenge in that it's unique and that we own very, very little of the shoreline of Lake Allen Henry. The last time I asked, we've not found a place that we own and control that we can put a second boat, boat ramp in. If we find that, I think it'll be time to look at how we might fund it. But tho, those are the two big challenges we have. The slips were expanded not too horribly long in the past, but there's still not enough of them.
We have much shoreline, this, the city property. Who, who does own that? Are control majority of, are there multiple?
It's multiple. There's also some housing developments down there that are private property. Most of those do have their own community boat ramp. And it's important to remember, though, those are private boat ramps. Those are for the property owners down there, and they're, they're not for the use of the general public. Those housing developments have been helpful to us when we've had to get boats off the lake in a hurry because of storms. But we do our best to help protect that too, because it's theirs, not of the general public's. There are multiple landowners. The undeveloped land, some of it is held in pretty big tracks. I would call that kind of the south side of the lake. It's really more the south, the west. But it's, it's held in several different pieces. The city owns a small track down by the dam proper. It is a very, it's a protected location from the lake. It's in a little cove. But it is a very, very steep and very difficult to use place, so it would not be where we could expand the public access. I will tell you this, for those that have been down to see that piece of the location, the lake is up so much, the catwalk to our boat dock where the police boats are kept is actually underwater. The boat ramp is higher than the catwalks are.
Okay, let's go to the airport.
Page forty-three will pick up and start the revenue summary for the airport, operating capital budget. Far left, total was nineteen point seven million in the current year. It's down to twelve point three in the proposed year. If you'll move to the middle, the seven point one million dollar decrease in cares, that, that's really what your substantial difference is. So those cares dollars were received, they were booked. We don't receive or book them again. They're still there. A lot of that money is still there to use, but it's not new revenue. The airport does expect to get an additional tranche coming out of the federal government on the COVID relief, but that's not been finalized just yet. Expense summary. We do have a, an increase in the compensation and benefits, compensation adjustment. We have a long-serving, excellent person serving as one of the deputy directors that will be retiring. So we are going to double fill that position for a short period of time to kind of get some of that institutional knowledge. We have an inline baggage system coming online. Ms. Campbell actually has a video of it running today for the first time for real. So we've watched bags automated on their way. I think she said to Denver, but they're headed somewhere.
Is that embedded in the, in the budget proposal? The video?
It is not. We, we might have to find a way to maybe show that to you tomorrow.
Okay, alright. I'd like Ms. Campbell to do a play-by-play on it when that.
I think she could, could quite well narrate that.
Good.
Never mind. That, we, we will be responsible for maintaining and operating that bag system. We charge it back, but that is going to be a, an increased cost for us. That service is down. And the CIP transfer will go down because we did reimburse with some of those cares funds that are in it. Next page is the airport's fund model. Concentrate on the FY twenty-two year. On the top of the page, of course, for the funding sources or the revenues, comes up to twelve point three million dollars. Bottom half of the page are the expenses that match out of that, also at twelve point three million dollars.
Okay, Council, any questions on the airport? Ms. Choi.
Would it be appropriate for Ms. Campbell to come up and talk a little bit about what's going on at the airport in terms of boardings, flights? I get that question regularly, and sometimes I'm just sitting somewhere and I'm overhearing a conversation. It's been a tough year. I find it interesting that Lake Allen Henry is, is busy, 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 and the airport has not been. So what's going on in terms of our bookings? Kind of compared to when COVID hit for good and where we are now?
Bookings are really hard for us to tell, but one of the indicators that we have is the passenger facility charge. So that's remitted to us at the end of the month. So anyone who's buying airfare three months, six months out in advance, so that's one indicator. And it's still, you know, substantially down. I think we're about, and I've in particular looked at Southwest, and I think they're still down about thirty percent from same month than previous year. So that would have been June. But every month, things get a little bit better. As far as air service goes, United's fully restored their, their air service, three, on average, three daily to Houston, two daily to Denver. Americans restored their service. Some months, they're up to nine flights a day, eight to DFW and one to Phoenix. Now, they run a different mix of fleet, so they can run some fifty-seaters, you know, seventy-five and on up. But, but even at that, they're running pretty close to the same number of seats that they did before. Southwest is once lagging a little bit behind. So there's four daily to Dallas Love Field, one to Las Vegas, and we expect Austin back in October. It'll be back in September on Sundays only. It'll be back in October daily. And, but one thing that Southwest has done is they're running a little bit larger aircraft. I suppose the seven hundred series, they're running the eight hundred, just about, I think it's twenty-five or thirty seats per flight. So, well, the number of flights aren't quite back. The number of seats are, are getting there. So, you know, other than that, the only metric that we can really use until they give us the information after the end of the month is the daily put-through for TSA. And June was really good. I think we're down twenty-two percent in June. July was, is going to be better. I think we're going to be somewhere around fifteen percent in July. So it's getting a little better every day.
We have, are renovating the airport stem to CERN. So where are we on that currently?
We're getting close.
You've said that before.
Yeah, today was a big day. The, you know, I think for the community and the passengers, you know, what they see is very obvious what's gone on at the airport in the last year with the improvements. Most everything on the secure side is done. All of our gateholds are finished. There, there's still some work. There's still some aesthetic work, but for the most part, that's done. We have a lot to do at the ticket counter. That is very hard work to do, because, you know, some nights, we only have from midnight to about three AM to get in there and do work, you know, painting and the floor, the floor improvements. But the biggest thing is, you know, it's just a lot of coordination with us and TSA and the airlines and implementing this inline baggage handling system. So we went live on that today. All three airlines are using it. That first bag went to Las Vegas. So, and I have not gotten a frantic call or text since we've been sitting here, so I think everything's going okay. But, you know, we had to tie in there and we have to do that phase before we can move the other piece of TSA equipment out and before we can take out each airline's existing system. So it's a, it's a slow process. It's a hard, hard process. But the passenger won't really see that. The passenger's still going to take their bag to a drop-off point until probably October. And then when we get the rest of the improvements done, and, but that baggage handling system's the last piece.
So completion date? You have one?
The official date right now is October third.
Subject to change.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think it already has. We, we don't have an official change order on it. The, the official change order's October third. But each piece of equipment has to be commissioned multiple times when you move a piece of equipment like that. And so we had a, a retest with TSA last week, so I think.
You're talking about the, the big scanners.
Correct. The baggage screening equipment, yes, ma'am.
We look forward to being completed.
Yes, ma'am. I can almost promise you not as much as we do. The, the airport, along with our tenants and passengers, we're, we're very ready, and the contractor is too, but just, just a lot of coordination. But we're certainly proud of the, the improvements so far.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. We'll move back from operations to the budget, back to Mr. Atkinson.
Go ahead and move over to page forty-six, which is your airport capital. First project is the big resealing the joints in the concrete. That's the concrete runways. Five point seven million. Airport general property improvements. It's taking care of everything out there at three hundred thousand. Roof repair and replacement at three hundred and twenty-four thousand. And we are also going to have an opportunity to replace one of the oldest ARF vehicles. These are the airport rescue firefighting fire trucks. Eight hundred thousand, that is to be funded out of the cares dollars. And again, there will be money coming out of the ARPA, but it's not here yet, so it's not booked.
Please continue.
Okay, the next couple of pages, two pages, will be the recommended fee changes. So Council, remember that one of the things the airport does is they really act as a landlord to numerous tenants of all types and shapes and sizes. Those contracts, those lease contracts have rate adjustments in them that come through almost every year. You do see this year, the hangar and shop rent, these terminal rent, land rent for the fixed-based operators or the FBOs. These are your various hangers, your service providers, things like that. Continues over into the next page. We have our office rentals to the TSA, land rent from the terminal, two individual buildings that are rented, and rental cars. So Kelly and her team analyze and adjust these each and every year.
Questions, Council? Please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Next topic will be transit or city bus? And ci, city buses here when y'all are ready to call them up. I'll start into this. We have Mr. Mandrell with us today. Start on the, on the overview. Note that we've got a little bit of an increase. We're going from fourteen point five six nine. This is a combined piece. Fifteen point one million is the proposed budget. The general fund piece of that, that is the first lineup there titled City Transfer. Last year was one point six million dollars, proposed again at one point six. That is a reduction from where it historically is, and at some point that will end. But we still have the use of the cares dollars that were booked, so we're still helping to do that. Most of the other grant funding is relatively flat, but the ARPA money will come, and when it does, those grants will adjust. There are some compensation and benefits that are being increased, trying to minimize staff turnover, turnover. And they've had an increase in their healthcare. So quick reminder, these are not city of Lubbock employees. So they're not on the same healthcare that we are or anything else. That is all provided separately. The professional services increase is due to the software changes and cleaning services. So you might imagine the amount of cleaning, not just of the facilities, but of each and every vehicle that they have, has gone way up, and it needs to do so. Capital's up a little bit. We will again have the opportunity to use grant funding to purchase a bus. Now, also part of the unique feature, the real estate is owned by the city, as is the fleet. Questions on city bus?
Mr. Chides, let's start with you and then Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if Mr. Mandrell or maybe you, Jared, provided free services for COVID clinic through our on-demand services. I'm just curious as to head count people that use the service. And congratulate, and thank you for providing that service as well.
Absolutely. Anything we can do to help the community in this recovery, so.
Thank you.
We, we don't have, we'd have to go back and pull that number, do some kind of digging to get to that number. Last we looked, there, we were carrying on average probably six to seven people when the health department was at the civic center. Now that that's moved, it's a lot more work for us to kind of move that zone around, because we use the spare system, which is our microtransit on-demand service to do that for us. So we have to go in there and manually move that zone, so it's a little bit more difficult to pull that number. But we actually were receiving calls today and wanting those, requesting those rides to those vaccine clinics that were still doing it for free. So it's still being utilized. But I would probably say on average, you're probably looking at at least six to seven a, a week.
One more question. The ProMaster vans.
Yes, sir.
What kind of impact did it have?
I, I don't think I can stand up here and talk long enough to tell, to talk about the, the impact they made on us. It's been tremendous. The problem with them is, is the, the first round of vans that we got back in September, October, they're already over thirty-six thousand miles on them. So we're racking up mileage very, very quickly on those. And so that's kind of problematic for a vehicle that's scheduled to be a, a five-year vehicle, a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And so we're trying to come up with some different service delivery options to kind of bring that back down and try to get a more life on those vehicles. But I will tell you, if it weren't for those vehicles, we would be in a lot worse situation than we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Mandrell. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, good questions. Thank you, Mr. Chides. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Kind of going to attach a little bit of mine on to what Mr. Chides was speaking about with regard to the use of the, those vehicles. The ARPA money, how much are we talking about? And can those funds be utilized to help out in maybe obtaining some more, do whatever you need to do for the vehicles that were used during the time of COVID?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the ARPA funding can be used for capital, capital needs. There's a couple of caveats that you have to certify with FDA. The main one is you cannot have any furloughed employees since March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, which is when the cares grant or the cares act came out. You certify that. And then you have to have that money planned into your transportation improvement plan, which is a three-year plan that we worked with the NPO with. And you also have to have, have that planned into your long-range plan. So there's some planning obstacles that we would have to get to that. The, the, for some capital. The, for some capital items, we have those in those documents. And really would take an amendment to those documents to change the funding source for those. But they're in there and that funding is available for capital purchases.
Is there anything that on the city side that can be done to help, you know, alleviate some of those obstacles that are in place? I'm looking both directions just for an answer. I know you said that there are some obstacles that you guys have and
I'll try and Chris, you can help me. He's got to go through a series of steps that are really the grant conditions. Several of those, in fact, the majority of them actually will end up coming back before the NPO board, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Several of us up here, of course, sit on that board. Chris is working again with the consultants that are helping with the overall plan to to kind of structure that. I think, Chris, you estimated about December when we would get results.
Yes, sir.
That will then drive those tips or transportation improvement plans.
I just didn't want anything to kind of hold us up. We've learned through the time of the pandemic. The first portion of it, how how much transportation is needing and how the adjustments have to to be made. So I was just curious as to how we could use that money, that we'd have enough of it and make sure that we get things taken care of. Compensation for staff, what does that look like if it looks like anything? Again, I'll point to the fact that they were instrumental in doing some things. Mr. Chaddis made reference to one piece, what type of compensations, if at all, will be available for the staff.
So, you know, our our biggest concern right now is operator pay. Where we look at, I've got some figures from like around the state in similar size. But they're technically small urban systems, so a little bit smaller than the city of Lubbock, but there's a few sprinkled in. There will be kind of similar. But we're probably towards the bottom of what the rest of the the systems in the state are paying for operators. And so we're in this budget we've proposed to go up. It's not going to get us to the point where, you know, kind of on the state average, but it's it will definitely be a shot in the arm and it'll definitely will help. But I feel like there's probably a longer term development of that structure for those employees to ensure that we can continue to bring people in. And really, the big piece of that is the retention.
Yeah.
You know, our turnover with employees right now is extremely high. And if we can have a more resilient, much safer, a much better system, if we can get those individuals in there, train them and keep them for a longer period of time. We will be better off. We have done some kind of some analysis on, you know, our accident rates and things of that nature. And it's, it's overwhelming in the first two years that an employee is providing service for us. The accident rates are really, really high. After that two year mark, I mean, it drops drastically. And so that's really, we're trying to figure out how we can get people over to your mark. But we'd really like to squeeze that down a little bit more to make sure we're providing good service. But that's kind of the bigger points, making sure we can attract and retain employees.
Especially with consultants doing some work in some potential changes for that system.
Correct.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Christian and Ms. Joy. Or excuse me, Mr. Christian, Ms. Chaddis and Ms. Joy.
I'm just curious about ridership. I imagine last year was a little rough for you. Give us a kind of a overview of what happened during COVID. During twenty and what your projections are now. Has ridership increased already this year? Just give us a twenty and twenty one review.
Sure. So if you include our entire system wide ridership, because the big, a big part of that is university. And when they shut down school last March, of course, that was, you know, devastating to our system. They're probably commutative, since the mod is probably eighty percent drop in ridership because of the university service. If you look at, if you take the university service out of the equation, only look at the city routes and the city services, it's about a forty two percent decrease. Most of that is because we reduced from a thirty minute peak service down to hourly service. And so that's about a forty five percent reduction in service. And so we're right at about a forty two percent reduction in that. When we introduced the microtransit piece of that to do the on demand services, that's continuing to grow. So much so that we're, we're up against capacity in that service now. And that's why we alluded back to the, to the vehicles running so much. Right now, we're providing, and that's, this is all trips through the on demand platform, which includes our ADA complimentary period transit, on demand intermedicate trips. We're running about two thousand of those a week right now. Which is, we started out, once we introduced this service, we were running, you know, seven hundred six, you know, five hundred, six hundred trips a week. And now we're up to two thousand. And about a month ago, we were, we ran all time high of about twenty one hundred trips in a week through the, through the on demand service in a week. So it's, it's definitely growing. It's a very, what we found with that is it's a, it's a service that we can utilize. I think that we need to kind of restructure it and balance out the knee for the capital and kind of how that fits into the overall service.
One more question. The bus stops.
Yes, sir.
Some are covered, some are not. West Texas weather, brutal. Brutal cold or brutally hot? What is the plan to have covers on those? Because again, the weather, I've seen some that are pretty dilapidated actually, that need complete replacement.
Yes, that's a great point. And one of the things that we're working on, so we're required to spend one percent of our fifty three oh seven federal funding, which is our main operating grant from, from the federal government. We're required to spend one percent of that per year on pasture amenities.
I'm sorry, one percent?
One percent. So typically, that's around thirty two to thirty three thousand dollars of our annual allocation per year that we have to spend on pasture amenities. Since we've kind of gone through the route study and kind of doing some other things, we've not wanted to invest a lot into putting shelters out there because we didn't want to put something out there and then have to move it. And so we've kind of put a brief pause on that, but we understand the urgency and the need. And so we've actually, in this budget, have increased that line on them a bit so we can do more of that. And, but kind of back to the, the route study we did, one of the things the consultants came back to that is we had too many bus stops. So one of the next pieces that we're going to be looking at is coming up with a policy of distance between stops. And then on the new routes, finding those heavy passenger usage areas and then investing in that area for a nice transit amenity.
Okay, you, you said that they might be moved?
Some of them, yeah. So we're, we're working through kind of a route restructure right now.
How, how is, how and who determines when to move it and where to move it?
Yeah, so we, we, we take, we take recommendations from, from this body, from our board, from the general public. And our first initial run, when we, we go to place any sort of pasture amenity is going directly to our board. So we will take those recommendations to them and with, with where the, where the recommendations come from. If it's a high boarding area, if it's just in an area of need, we take that to them and with our board and make those decisions and make those recommendations replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Mandrell. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis, Ms. Joy.
Mr. Mandrell, I, I think Mr. Atkinson indicated that we do own the property where the bus facility is located, correct? And, and we buy and pay for the buses, correct, through the city?
Yes, ma'am.
The operation itself is done by contract.
That's correct.
And so we contract with your company and they operate it.
Yes, ma'am.
There's been a lot of questions about wage increases for every department. But we've also been questioned about why the city does not raise the rates for the drivers. We don't have, the city does not control that. Is that correct?
So everything that we do goes through the normal budgetary process. So I'm the only employee from the contractor. All the other employees kind of belong to a holding company. So everything that we do, there's not a contract in place that kind of spells out or the parent company does not make those recommendations. What we do is here locally, we, that's my responsibility to put that into the budget and carry that to the budgetary process for that. So that goes initially through Mr. Howerton to Mr. Atkinson and then to this body.
And so are you saying that this council is sitting here approving the pay for your drivers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what is your pay rate?
So, so right now for, so last year, we were, you guys are so kind to allow us to increase our initial rate for operators. And so we went from a twelve dollar starting pay to a thirteen dollar starting pay, which is a big shot for us. We, we haven't had any sort of starting pay change since before two thousand eight. And so that was the first, kind of a really big thing for us. We've gotten to the point where we've, you know, deployed this on demand service. And for those vans, you do not need a CDL to drive that vehicle. So we took that thirteen dollars and we kind of divided it up. So we have a thirteen dollar starting pay for our CDL drivers and a twelve fifty starting pay for our non-CDL drivers. So that's kind of the beginning pay after they get through training. In the budget, we are proposing to move that up on CDL drivers up to fourteen an hour. Non-CDL drivers up to thirteen.
But the contractor actually hires those drivers, correct?
Correct.
And you actually pay those drivers?
The pastor from the city is.
In other words, you tell us how much you're paying and the city reimburses you? Is that what it is? Okay, because I don't think, I'm under the impression that the city of Lubbock does not determine the wages for those drivers.
So we, we have historically worked really closely with the city's wage scale. And so we have assigned our jobs very closely with the city of Lubbock's wage scale. And so we try to be really consistent with what the city does. Ultimately, there's, there is, there's times where it just doesn't match, but we try to get as close to that as possible. And but when we have those, we will put those in the budget and then bring those to the city for, for approval.
Whose employees are those drivers?
So they belong to a city transit management company doing business at City Bus.
That's what I thought, but we kind of went around the circle to get there. They actually are not city employees.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel, I just remind you, let's try to keep our best we can questions to the budget and not to operations if we can, if we can do that. Okay. Mr. Atkinson, please continue.
Okay, let's move to the next one, which will be cemetery. Start on page fifty two, cemetery revenue summary. Do you see an increase in overall revenue? That's the comparison of the far left to the far right on this charge. Lot sales and the grave services revenue has increased. The cemetery is also one of those unique enterprises that has its own small little reserve fund. So we are reducing the general fund transfer because of that. And we will use some excess reserves in the current or the proposed budget. Next page is the expense summary that goes with it. So we are, of course, these are city employees. They will receive the compensation adjustment if it's ultimately approved by the council. We have eliminated a part time pay category here. And there'll be a decrease in some of the terminal pages because of the, how the staffing has worked out. Property and liability is up in this category as well. Our capital increase is to buy a watering system that's on a trailer so that we can do a better job of trying to keep the grass green out there. It looks good this year, but we've had a lot of help that wasn't water we put down. So it's what you'll see in the cemetery.
Any questions about the cemetery? All right, let's move to the civic centers, please.
Start with civic center revenue. Far left, two point nine million current budget year, three point one nine, nearly three point two for the proposed year. Activity at the civic center is picking back up. There's stuff booked a little bit later out in the year. It's not what it was pre pandemic. But we will have a smaller general fund transfer. And we will use a little of the excess reserves here. Would note that hotel occupancy tax in the community is noticeably higher now than it was. It is noticeably higher. It is getting much, much better. The, what they call RevPAR, revenue per available room or average daily rate, they're two different metrics. But they both really speak to how much each of those rooms is, is selling for, is renting for. Up until just about the last month, while occupancy had gone up, those revenues had not really gone up per room. They've started to pop back up. I think we're really starting to see some improvement there. Hotel occupancy taxes are up. That's going to help, but that's up compared to probably the worst year on record. So we're trying, we're coming back. Lisa and her team, Civic Lubbock teams, they're working really hard. Expense summary. Counsel, we do have the proposed compensation judgment, adjustment. One of the additional employees we're requesting is to add an assistant director position at the civic center. Lisa does a phenomenal job. Always been shocked at how small her staff truly is, especially if you just walk one lap around that building. So we are asking to do that. That is, number one, I believe, good management. Number two, it's succession planning. I think it's important that we consider that. We do have some M and O increased. A big part of that is we're replacing one of the big sump pump controlling units out there. We're doing it with cash. It is original to the building. We cannot afford to have those not work. So we are doing that. And their property and liability is up as well. And I just find that really ironic for a building that was practically closed for a year. That somehow we have increased exposure. But that's my editorial comment. Questions?
Any questions on civic center? All right, special revenue funds.
Okay, move into the special revenue funds and we will start with your central business district TIF or tax increment finance. First page of that, page fifty eight, is your overall financial model for the TIF. You see total funding sources in the amount of one point five seven million. Underneath that, you start with the expenditures. The expenditures are budgeted at one point four four eight with a remainder of a hundred and twenty five thousand. That money sweeps to their reserves. That'll take the reserve account to one point three million. The restricted portion of that is pegged against their debt service, which is just under four hundred thousand dollar. Leaving an available reserve balance of roughly nine hundred and forty one million. Counsel, just to keep it up on the table. Your TIFs receive a tax increment from a defined geographic zone, in this case, the central business district. The only dollars that come into this TIF are collected from within that zone. And the use of those dollars then are restricted to the benefit of that zone. So I know y'all are well aware, but we've got a great audience today that was dying to hear that. If you'd like, I'll go to the next page, which is their capital proposal. And one project that's proposed, new cash, which is their cash, working on the historic district designation. That was an identified output in the master plan. And just for point of reference, these TIFs didn't have a very good year last year on their, on the increment, the value of the increment. Had a really good year this year. So while the city at large benefited from both new growth and growth in existing values, we saw that in the TIFs as well.
Okay, any questions on CDTIF budget? How about we go to community development?
Okay. Community development, this summary is going to take several pages. It's a compilation of the income that comes in there. So we're going to start funding sources under the community development block grant. The entitlement program has gone up slightly, about five percent, two point two two million. Program income, hundred and fifty thousand, that's down from where we were. The CDBGCV, which was the COVID nineteen funding that came out, that's all been booked. There's not new money in this category for this budget year. So because of that, you see the swing from four point three million current year down to the two point four in the proposed year. Next are the department level expenditures, current year, six hundred eighty seven thousand, proposed Next are the department level expenditures, current year six hundred eighty-seven thousand, proposed year four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Move down to the public service, non-public service categories. Current year, we programmed one point nine million. We're going to be at one point nine million again. It's down slightly, about twenty-two thousand dollars for that. So the total expenditures are down. You have a balanced budget for this portion. Next page, we'll look at the home program. This category of funding also up five point one percent. Program income is down, but down slightly, giving you a total funding source in the home program, just a hair under one point five. That will be expended by putting one point four million against affordable housing development. Ninety-five thousand for the ten percent administrative charge that comes in. All in, we're going to have a reduction there of just a little over fifty thousand dollars for this category. Next one is the emergency solutions grant or the ESG. Entitlement income here is down just slightly. Um, we do not have round two of the COVID funding. We got that in the current year. There's not new money on that yet. So a hundred and eighty thousand dollars um in revenue. And the expenditures match. You will see that spent towards the homeless housing and services as well as a seven and a half percent administrative fee to fund the operations. And, and again, the big delta there is the COVID money in the current year not proposed. Let's jump into some new money. We're on page sixty-two. This is the American Rescue Plan, new money that's coming in. This is separate from the American Rescue Plan dollars that the council's been discussing for several meetings now. So this is unique to community development. Um, our entitlement portion of that is three point six million dollars. The administrative fee is five hundred and forty thousand, leaving just a little over three million to go to the tenant-based rental assistance and supportive services. Next stream is the Department of the Treasury's ERA money. Um, that all came in, in the current budget year. You had two rounds of emergency rental assistance totaling about fourteen million dollars. There was administrative money with it, leaving twelve point three million that actually went to the assistance. And that money is for the vast majority of it committed. It is booked, it is not all paid out. It hasn't all come due, but it is contracted, I guess would be a way to say it. So despite you not seeing money in twenty-two for that, money is still there and still will be paid out. Top of page sixty-three begins the community services block grant. Um, this one largely remains static, um, five hundred thousand dollars coming in. See the expenditures out and then leaving three hundred and sixty-five thousand for the community self-sufficiency programs. And that's very similar to what we have in the current year as well. We'll continue on the pursuit of new and exciting acronyms. This one will be TRAP or the Texas Emergency Rent Assistance Program. Um, these were dollars that came in, in this current year. We're not getting the new dollars uh at this time for the future. This was also rental assistance. So if we're keeping track, we have had a tremendous amount of dollars flow into the community to help folks um with rental. Next is the Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program. If Karen was standing up, she would call this CAP for us. That went up again. In fact, I think this may be on a budget amendment coming to the council. Um, one point seven five million dollars, nearly a ten percent increase um in the, the proposed budget year. This will come out uh and net down to one point six two million dollars to help folks in our community with energy assistance programs. So I'll end that one up slightly. That'll conclude where community development stands today. I will tell you based on what's going on in both the public health world and the community development world, expect more is coming. We're just showing you what we have now.
Okay, counsel, questions on uh community development? All right, let's go to gateway financial model, but that's next.
All right, start with your gateway program. Um, we've discussed this uh early in the calendar years. We worked through our future needs um project with the council. Your funding sources, your revenue for this year, um, estimated to be right at nine million dollars. We will transfer of that eight point eight million to your existing debt service. We do not have a programmed new debt to come out. Remember, this model right now has us constrained, need about three years for it to really come up. We will cash fund the project in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Show you that on the next page. We will be, at this point, um, have higher expenses than we have revenue, but that will be balanced out with your available reserve funds. So go down to the bottom on that. We'll have a fund balance of seven point eight. We're holding set six point five as your policy level or the required reserves, still leaving us with one point three million after we take the four hundred thousand to the project. We go to the project, it's on the next page, page sixty-six. It's continuing work on Upland Avenue. This is the ninety-eighth to one hundred and fourteenth street segment. Seven hundred thousand dollars, um, six hundred and thirty thousand of that new cash. And there's sixty-nine, nearly seventy thousand in unallocated bonds that we'll put towards it. Couch cushions are bearing this one also.
Okay, counsel, this, I know this is not a, a big surprise because we've talked about it, but are there any questions around the gate, around gateway? This is Ms. Patterson-Harris.
You indicated, Mr. Jarrett, that it'd take about three years for us to get to the other side so that we can begin even looking at doing some additional things. Does that three-year include the, the up and coming uh budget year?
The FY twenty-five budget is where I think you can see step one of the next project. And recall, counsel, that we owe you um consideration of a resolution that slightly restructures the use of Gateway. So we're kind of holding that as well.
Because that, that was going to be my next point. I don't want us to forget. Twenty twenty-five is, it's a ways off and, and this, this, this diet may look different, but I don't want us to forget what those of us who are here now are suggesting that we begin to do. We've heard from citizens for a while now indicating that while everybody pitches in to this bucket, that everybody should have the ability to utilize or have access to the funds that go in this bucket. I just want to put that and will sit this right here because I don't want us to forget. It is, this is so important. We've talked about it here on this diet and I want us to hold true to that. So whatever, uh, whatever we need to put in black and white, I would that we do that as soon as we're able to do so.
Ye- yes, ma'am, thank you. I would expect we could have that revised resolution in front of y'all possibly in September. Trying to knock out some stuff between here and there, but um, we've not forgotten.
All right, let's move to uh hot tax, please.
Okay, here is another good news story for the budget. And I've already kind of tipped the hand as we looked at the civic center. So if you would, the second column from the right um is the proposed budget. The one to the left of it is the current budget. So the current budget's five point six million dollars available for your hot tax. The proposed budget is six point eight, a twenty-one percent recovery. So it is coming back. It's still about a million dollars under where we had been before the pandemic, but we're a whole lot better than we were in the current year. And you see the note on here about the occupancy recovering, but the RevPAR um is not. RevPAR has started to tick up since we wrote, wrote this. To the right, uh, on the pie chart might be the easiest way to look at how these dollars would be divided. The division of these dollars, um, with the exception of some of the debt coverage, um, is the control of the council. The proposal here is forty-two percent to your convention and tourism bureau, that is Visit Lubbock. Twenty-eight percent to civic center operation and marketing. Four percent to civic center CIP. We have a very small piece left on the Buddy and Maria Elena Holly Plaza debt, uh, one percent. The TIF, in this case, this is North Overton and the city portion of that, which is the conference center, um, five percent. And then fourteen percent to Lubbock Sports Authority. And the final six percent goes to Civic Lubbock in the form of a grants program, which ultimately they put back out to work in the community. And of course, that comes to the council as well. Questions on hot? This is a lot better sheet than what it looked like last year. We should have made the pipe bigger because it is bigger.
Counsel, questions on, on hot tax? Okay, let's go to uh North and East, excuse me. What's, what's next? Lubbock Business Park.
Business partner.
Excuse me, jumped ahead.
Okay. Start on the left for the FY twenty-two proposal. Um, total tax collection, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. About eight thousand dollars in interest earning, leaving six hundred and forty-three thousand available. Salary and benefits, office supplies carrying on down, only expending twenty-three thousand of those dollars. Thus, you take the remainder and flow it into the reserve fund. That reserve fund is for capital to be spent at Lubbock Business Park. Again, the dollars are collected from Lubbock Business Park. And you'll have just under one point four million there. Prior year, there was a big project that came out of this, so they're starting it back up.
Mr. Massengill.
The, those tax collections be reflective of the Amazon project?
Not for this year because the render date was January one.
Right, but going forward, they must not be in this.
You've also got a new beauty, you've got, you got.
Cross dock facility, the beauty supply and.
You would think by the end of twenty-three, we would have both Amazon and Spec Two.
Let's, 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 what's?
Okay. Let me say it's extremely conservative, too conservative, starting in FY twenty-three and we'll, we'll look at that.
Let's get it, let's get it. We don't have to have it for this budget, but let's sometime this fall, let's get a look, let's get an update as to what this could be. It's a, I know that when we, it, it's only important when we look at it, when it, as it relates to the mark, the lead and market level budget. Because that's where, as we know, this is, these reserves are going to fund projects that are.
Exactly, they build capacity, so let us.
So that's, that's, I think, the reason why we'd like to see that. Good catch. Anything else on the business part, TIF financial model? Okay, North and East Lubbock uh neighborhood and infrastructure fund.
Okay. Remember that this is a transfer from the general fund um that represents the oil and gas royalty receipts that the city receives. In the past, this was divided up into an additional bucket. Part of it went to central business district TIF. Now, the ten percent stays in the general fund and the full ninety ends up going to this program. We do see the spot prices trending higher. They should stay above the twenty-one levels. And these go directly to revitalization projects in North and East Lubbock. The program Karen and her staff run and run very, very well. If you want to look, we've, we've come up from a hundred and seventy-four thousand to two hundred and ninety-five thousand in two years. And the only fees charged to this are those actual projects. There's no administrative take or anything out of them.
Ms. Joy.
Are, are we every year expending these funds? They're going to some project? Okay, just want to be sure we're not sitting on any of it, no carryout.
Was, was twenty twenty-one the first year that this got the complete, the full? So that's why you see the, the bump. You got the full oil and gas. Okay, you may have said that, I may have been zoning out on something else.
Yeah, this will do significant work on fifteen homes is the estimate.
All right, questions on Neelif? All right, North Overton TIF.
North Overton TIF, um, tax collections, four point seven million. That's the value of the increment. Sixty-two thousand in interest earnings. We have the one percent surcharge from the hotel. We have the hot tax collections. This is only from the hotel in North Overton. Goes back to the benefit of North Overton. It's not coming in from other hotel properties.
Just the one where we're in it, where we're in a part.
We're a partner on the public side, yes, sir.
Okay.
Five point two seven five bottom line funding sources or revenues expenditures, four point one, leaving one point one extra that will flow to reserves. Six and a half million dollar total reserve, one point three million. That's the debt service reserve. It's required, leaving five point one million available for projects to the North Overton TIF.
Mr. Massengill, do you have a comment? Your microphone's on, just want to make sure you hear it. Okay, okay. Mr. Griffith, you were, looked like you were ciphering there on some numbers. Anything, anything you've commented on here, still ciphering? Okay. Okay, counsel, further questions or comments on the North Overton TIF? Ms. Brock, Ms. Brock seems to have this one running the right way. It's on, it's on a good track.
Yeah, it's really positive. On the next page is their capital proposal, which is a million dollars to work on some of the streets.
I had a, uh, uh, Ms. Joy, I'll turn to forward Ms. Joy, then I'll come back, I have a question after that.
I was just wondering on the debt, where we are on that in terms of what the balance of that debt? I was under the impression that we're close.
Cheryl, hit your button over there so I can turn your microphone on. There you go.
Um, if you'll look at the debt service, twenty-six, twenty-seven, one point six million. And it rolls off the, I think there's two more years after that maybe on the debt service. So yeah, it's going to roll off pretty quick. And that's one reason you see the increases at the bottom.
Right.
Is the roll-up of the debt. Uh, we're working with Brianna to try to make sure that we're picking up everything that needs to be done out there over the next five years to make sure we get everything redone that needed to be, so.
Cheryl, do you recall, or many would to help us with this, uh, Avenue X? Sort of, you know, the, did, was that redone? Was that ever redone with, fully redone as we did this work in the, uh, in North Overton TIF?
It was redone from Mac Davis to the Marcia Sharp for sure. I don't think we've redone the rest of it. I think that is on the list of the streets that we're going to work on. In fact, I'm pretty sure that's what's next year is Avenue X. Would?
Would that be inside this, inside the, inside, it's pretty rough and, and it, with all the development that's happened and, and.
The Avenue X you're talking about?
Yes, and I know we did a little bit of X right at Maine. We did, because we were starting to lose vehicles in, in there, but we, um, but between Maine and the old Ninth Street, whatever we call Ninth Street now, it's still Ninth Street, I guess, that's particularly bad.
Yeah, so we are looking at those streets and what they can do. Um, we have it, we also right now, just going to give you a heads up, we have Mac Davis out and it's coming to council for award next count, next month, um, to get that rebuilt between um Avenue X and university.
Okay.
And so we'll get that going, but the Avenue X itself is, is something that needs to be scheduled.
And I think we've got a, we do have a project coming up and we have a, a redevelopment project at Avenue X and Maine on both, on the north side, on both sides. So we'd want to probably, um, uh, sequence it with that, but we, that, that road's in bad, bad shape. Thank you, Boyd. It's got, yeah, we've got drainage issues in the whole neighborhood, but that's unfortunately, that's, that's not solvable with the work on Avenue X.
The uh, Mac Davis is in the FY twenty-two, twenty-three plan, I believe.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else on North Overton TIF? All right, anything else on North Overton TIF? Okay, we've now got just a couple pages of other special revenue funds. Mr. Atkinson, any, anything you'd like to call out here for council?
You know, really on this one, the only thing that shows up, you know, that's a huge change is on the bottom of page seventy two. Those are various grants that come in that stay in this category and they're programmed to go up. I just realized page seventy two and seventy three are identical. Oh, ones and expense.
Yeah, one's the expense side, yeah.
Well, there's an easy answer to that. They nearly all balance perfectly, just slightly different.
Okay, council, any, any questions on special revenue funds? Okay, let's pause right there and do any, do some, our takeaways from part two, please. Jared, you want to run through those, what you have, please?
Have a shortlist for today. We had good discussion around the water rate. And we had that discussion separate from my point number two, which was further discussion on how to fund that second water tower, whether that was as proposed, half and half, all with cash. We have a note to go back and look at the business park TIF model as far as the tax values that we'll pick up in the next year, not twenty two, but in twenty three.
Okay. Anything else? Is that all you have?
That's the list I have.
Counsel, anything, anything you want to add? Christian, Mr. Channis, you guys good? I think Mr. Griffith has a question. It's back to something we talked about yesterday. I think he caught it last night as he was had his green, green eye shade on. He was going through this in detail. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, on just in the last few pages, we we didn't really talk about municipal court fund.
I was, we talked about.
Municipal Court Fund.
We talked about it.
We talked about it yesterday.
Yes.
Budget page, it's four hundred seventy two, municipal court fund.
Is that, that's volume one? Is that volume one?
Two.
Oh, it's, it's a special, okay, okay. Okay, so that's the. Okay.
Page four seventy two in your hymnal is, yeah, volume two, municipal court fund. And my, my concern is that we've got dollars attached for court security, court improvement and court technology. I just want to make sure those are not spent on the current facility.
That's a good point, Mr. Griffith, and we haven't taken, we haven't, we haven't talked about that in facilities.
I think the dollars are actually programmed for some of the improvements going into the new facility, but we will verify that.
That's, I just want to make sure.
And Ms. Brock can verify that. That is all for the enhancements over there.
Okay, Cheryl always has the answer. Thank you.
Okay, nice catch. Good answer. All right. What else, counsel? Okay, Mr. Atkinson, give us, sort of give us a status of where we are. We've got part three in front of us. It's a, it's rather, it's rather short.
It is. Part three would be for tomorrow. Those are your component units, so they're really kind of your outside groups. We have those representatives scheduled to be here tomorrow with you. Counsel, the schedule for tomorrow has you starting at two thirty. That will convene in a meeting to consider whether or not to start the process of calling a bond election. So that's the future needs, the just under a hundred and seventy five million dollar proposal. Once that is completed, you will roll straight into budget, straight into the component units. Like to walk through those. And then if we could, we'll go back through kind of our tick notes from day one, two, and if we have any on three. Take the input, the answers from y'all and anything else you may have. The following day is when we're supposed to get our calculations on the tax rates. And we'll wrap all that back up and bring it back to you for discussion on the tenth. Come back to you in work session. And we'll continue to post your budget and work sessions until you're done with your adoption.
So tomorrow, when we go into the budget, it's lead a market Lubbock and related.
Young Civic Lubbock.
Civic Lubbock. And that's pretty much it, isn't it? He, he had, we have the overhead storage. We, we, it's, it's on the list. He mentioned that on.
Yeah, I called it the ARPA water tower.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
My shorthand.
All right, so I'll go, I'm starting with Mr. Christian, work our way down. Any, anything, any takeaways or any, any requests you have as you, you know, we've seen most of, we've seen most of the budget, ninety eight percent of the budget. Really? Any, any thoughts while we have a minute here before we, before we close? Hit your button there, please, Randy.
That would be good, too. No, it's been very good, very clear. Just a couple of things that, for those people viewing at home, you see this on, on some of the, especially looking at like North Overton. If Cheryl could briefly tell those folks at home the difference between a TIF and a PID, because that's very sometimes confusing, especially when you have two different funding sources. So they'll just know the reason why those numbers are there.
All right, you're on, Ms. Brock.
Thank you. Actually, the difference between a TIF and a PID, the TIF is actually tax dollars, which what happens is the year that the TIF is created, it's considered the base year, whatever that value is. The city or the county or whoever continue to get the, the taxes on that particular value. As that value goes up, that's the part that's the increment and the TIF district gets the taxes on any of the, any of the increase in value above that base year. That's what, how a TIF is funded. A public improvement district is an assessment over and above your taxes. In other words, they'll have a service and assessment plan. And most of them are done based on so much, so many cents time, on, based on a hundred dollars, you know, value that's. And so basically, that's an assessment. It is not a tax. It's over and above the taxes that they pay. And it's for specific uses within that pit only. They, they have boards which make decisions about what they want to use their money for. They also pay for the maintenance on any improvements, you know, green spaces, parks, walking tracks, whatever. They, they maintain all of those.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Man. Anything else? Is that all you have, Mr. Christian? Okay, Mr. Channis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to extend a thank you to Cheryl, Blue and Jared. Great job, great explanations. Hopefully, the public has a better picture as, and understanding as to what it takes and how much it takes to operate a city. Because it's, great job, well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. I like all Mr. Channis's comments, just hats off to the staff. I was thinking back Cheryl to twenty sixteen when it was some of our first budget and you I mean, I can't even remember how many days you stood down there and delivered the information, but Blue and Jared and your team, y'all have all come up with a method to deliver a tremendous amount of information on all the departments in the city in a very efficient manner. And it makes for very productive work as it relates to the budget for this group.
Okay, I'll go to the far end, Ms. Patterson Harris. If I called on you last, you'd be mad, too.
No, I was gonna get up and dance if you called me last, but since I'm good now. I just want to say a huge thank you to Mr. Atkinson and the Money Trio over here and also the other staff. And I'll kind of take off for Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Massengill stated when I first started on council here and I was gugging water out of a water hose, man, it was, it was rough. And so now to see that the staff is really taking the time to give us a good, a good presentation, a good product. Man, it, it really takes the load off of the council in, in making some of the, the decision. It feels a little bit different. So I want to say a huge thank you to the staff for doing what you've done to give us what we have in front of us. And as I said to Mr. Atkinson and the, and the Money Trio, Money Duo over here, it, it really feels good to know that you guys do the work all the time and you, you a lot of times make the council look good and, and do give the citizens what they need as we try to make this, this place run. So I just want to say thank you. Man, it, it feels a, a, a whole lot better this year than it did before, kind of like what Mr. Massengill said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'll take a rain check on that thing.
Don't, we won't forget, I promise you. Okay, yeah, yeah, that's right, singing and dancing. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you. I've got one more item that I brought up yesterday that I'm still scratching my head on. And that is a capital fund project. Comprehensive physical impact analysis, a hundred and twenty thousand. And Brian did a good job explaining it yesterday. I'm just still concerned about the why.
At its most basic, the why is that that is one of the tasks, one of the assignments that came out of your Plan Lubbock twenty forty. And we're attempting to stay on that schedule and work through them.
Because it's, because it's in the plan is where that came from.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to dig deeper on this and I'll get with staff and do that, but I do have concerns over that.
Okay, we can certainly add that to our, to our list. Any other, any other budget comments?
No, I, again, I echo everyone else and your appreciation of putting, doing this so accurately and simplifying it for us. Thank you very much.
Ms. Joy.
I've enjoyed this budget session a whole lot more than I did last year. Last year was hard for everybody and really for staff because we came in knowing we couldn't do cost of living adjustments, that we were going to be limited on projects. And it wasn't a good feel for me as a councilperson not to be able to move this city forward, but we just didn't have the money. But the good thing was you guys didn't complain. You just kept working. And so this one is much more fun. There is some money and there are adjustments that have been made, a lot of adjustments. And when I say adjustments, I'm not just talking about whether it's seven percent or six or five or four. I'm talking about even some adjustments that needed to be made in salaries that hadn't been able to be made. So this is a I feel better about, about this year. I have one question. Mr. Atkinson, how many unfilled positions that have been funded? Do we have accepting out Lubbock Fire and Lubbock Police?
The last report I ran, I can remember the percentage. And unfortunately, it includes all, and it was just right at eight point two percent of total positions. I can have you a better number tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think I echo, I echo your, your comments. I, I want to just make sure that that staff, that all our leaders here, how pleased I am with our that, that the track we're on. The decisions that we've made collectively implemented over the last five years are, are paying off. You know, if you look at our, our debt per capita and compare it to this, our peer group, we're going the right direction. If you look at the way our debt is being paid down, we're going the, the right direction. If you look at our, what I would think is productivity, that is you know, headcount, you know, you know, city headcount on a per capita basis. It's remaining flat or going down just a little bit. Our budget per capita is, has grown a little bit, but it's grown within, certainly within, I think, a reasonable kind of tolerance. I believe that the growth we've experienced as a community has allowed us to make significant investments while at the same time delivering a property tax rate that will be lower than any year since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. When we get finished with, if we approve the rate where we are today. Maybe twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, but it's a, we'd be going back six fiscal years, I believe, before when only Mr. Griffith and his joy were on this, this council, the rate, about the, the rate itself. I think it's also fantastic that we go through these enterprise funds and we see how many other projects are being funded with cash. Stormwater is an example, our water projects being funded with cash. It goes on and on. That's, that's just a few examples. And I, I do look forward to the day when we're able to fund a lot of our routine capital in the general fund with cash. And I know that will take more discipline and take a bit, bit more time, but I think we're making, we're making progress towards that. You know, some fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years ago, our property tax rate was cut with much fanfare in the city. But we kicked the can down the road and we issued debt. And we issued debt for things like street maintenance and for things like trucks and PCs and printers and and yet, you know, you've got to pay the, you got to pay for that at some point. And we've now done that. And that tax rate crept up to pay for that. The tax rate has stabilized. And we've been able to make many investments, including the building we're in and the public safety improvements that are going on around our community. We've been able to pay for those and keep that tax rate flat or even a little bit down. Puts us in, I think, a great position to consider tomorrow, going to the voters with a bond initiative in the fall that is very responsible. And in fact, we take the tax rate back to about what it was, a little lower than what it was two years ago. So, you know, I just applaud the leadership and your willingness to stick with this and make difficult decisions. Blue, you and your team deserve a tremendous amount of credit. You, there's a big part of your team that we don't ever see up here and, but they, they do a lot of great work. Your work with our component units, with our partners, with, with Lubbock Power and Light, with, with, with the others is not lost on us and we're thankful for that. So I'm excited. I'm, I'm excited to get into the few more, the, the rest of this, answer our questions, but I think twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two is going to be a really exciting year for the city of Lubbock. If there's nothing else, counsel. I'll give you a chance. Okay. So we'll. enough's enough. We'll we'll convene at two, we'll convene at two thirty tomorrow afternoon. Following our special meeting, we'll to consider the bond election, we'll go straight into our our budget workshop. It's six nineteen. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. We're adjourned.